Good evening. I would like to call the General Committee to Meet Daughter. Ms. Voce, will you lead us in a prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather together this evening for the purpose of making good decisions on behalf of the community we serve. As we approach the end of the first nine-week period, we are grateful and thankful for the hard work of our employees, our students and their parents in providing optimal opportunities for learning in each of our classrooms. Father, help us as we help the children reach their academic goals and give us the wisdom to reach each student in the way that is most meaningful for him or her. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Gaines, will you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Row call Ms. Voce?
Mrs. Acevedo is not with us. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft, we would ask for continued prayers for Dr. Kraft. He is battling significant illnesses and we would ask for everyone in the community to pray for him in the next coming weeks. Mr. Egan is not with us. Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Dyssart here. Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. I call on item number four. We have Super News. This is Alex Snyder. Good evening.
Good evening. You're looking at Document Good Evening, number four in your packets for today. This month, we kick off our new format of Super News, so I'm going to keep our monthly communications report brief. On the first page, you'll see a sampling of the news coverage received this past month. This month's coverage really focused on our family engagement activities at each of our schools and events parish-wide, and our Owl Week, which was held at the Shawmet High School, as well as our public showings at the MoMA Center. We also recently released a press release last week on the phenomenal success of our CHS Voices students, eight of whom have qualified for the live round of the Donald W. Senior Vocal Competition being held on October 21st at Loyola University. CHS and NOCA had by far the most students qualify for the statewide competition, which is very exciting, so I congratulate all of the teachers and students for their success at that. And this story should be in this week or next week's newspapers. On the second page is our Facebook statistics with a list of all of our posts for the month. Shawmet High School's Owl Week videos had the most engagement with over 17,000 people being reached. And finally, you'll see our engagement on our district website with an additional 80,000 visits since our last school board meeting. Upcoming events, just to mark your calendar, CHS Ring Day is scheduled for October 19th, and the CHS Homecoming Game is Friday, October 26th. So, without further ado, I will hand it off to the boys in the back for this month's Super News.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News. Hello, everyone, and welcome to Super News. I'm Barry Lemoine.
And I'm Alex Snyder. We'll start our Super News with a super week of activity as we see all of the fun and fellowship that is part of Shawmet High School's annual Owl Week. A spirited time was had by all, highlighted by the return of many alum who took part in our alumni social. The CHS Alumni Association is taking an active role in bringing folks back to the nest as seen by its presence at a number of community events. I guess Arnold Schwarzenegger had it right when he said, "Owl be back."
Readers as Leaders was at the heart of a recent gathering when the St. Bernard Reading Association hosted its membership kickoff meeting at Arlene Miro Elementary School. Affiliated with the Louisiana Reading Association, the group promotes and supports reading research, reading development, and the advancement of literacy. Tessie White Stein, the president of the local chapter, and vice president Kayla Russell also visited the school board recently, sharing some of the new things planned for the new year with an emphasis on fostering a love of reading for everyone.
Lots of people joined, but I'm not sure if everybody realizes what awesome benefits you have for being a member, so I wanted to point out a couple of them. And participation in exceptional professional development through the conferences and through the meetings themselves, we do have great professional literacy development. Affiliation with outstanding literacy professionals who also come to speak, we bring authors in, so you have lots of opportunities to learn about literacy and how to promote it with our students.
And speaking of reading, one of our outstanding ELA teachers and a regional finalist last year, Jenny Maldonado, was recently honored at the Superdome.
Maldonado does her best to help every student find something that they like to read.
I'm trying to make school better for the kids who maybe don't love it so much. I'm trying to make it a more positive experience for them, and really, it breaks my heart a little bit every time somebody comes into my room at the beginning of the year and they say, "I hate reading," so I want to change that for them. I want to find things they like to read, whether it's a comic book, or you know, the dictionary, whatever it is that they want to read, I try to find something for them so that school isn't a painful process.
And now, along with Chevron representative Leah Brown, please help me welcome today's Chevron Teacher of the Week, Jenny Maldonado. And now, we'll go from the Superdome to another beautiful structure, the MoMA Center in Old Araby, where a special gathering recently took place as a delegation from the Walk Bike Places Conference visited the center. Superintendent Doris Voce and parish president Guy McGinnis were on hand to welcome the guests and share with them some of the challenges and the many successes that have been part of our parish's story post Katrina. The visit at MoMA's was just part of the group's tour through St. Bernard, highlighting how our quality of life, great schools, streets, shared spaces, historic architecture, and varied amenities create an appealing community. Hey, Alex, do you like riding bikes?
I do, as long as I'm not too tired. Get it? Too tired.
I see.
Anyway, the MoMA Center will host a number of planetarium shows in October.
And you know, one of those dates, October 13th coincides with the Old Araby Sugar Festival at the ACOG lawn, where performers from Araby Elementary and musicians and key club members from Shawmet High School will take part in this sweet, good time.
And while sugar is delicious, too much of it can be a bad thing. That message is just part of the work that a pair of dieticians is sharing with our students as part of their internship with Joanie Bloom, our food service manager.
Our rotation here in St. Bernard Parish schools have been pretty varied. We did a lot of things. We actually worked in the Shawmet High School cafeteria during lunchtime, which was very fast-paced, and we taught a couple nutrition lessons at the high school. We went with Joanie to taste some food products that companies make for students, so that was pretty interesting. And yeah, just learning more about, start to finish, how students get fed here in St. Bernard Parish.
Other things that we talked about in the class, just preparing things from scratch is really important. You know, you put your love and energy and time into the food, and people can really sense that, and it's also often healthier. When you buy things in the store, you flip over the nutrition label, there's a lot of ingredients that we can't pronounce, that we're not really sure what they are. When we make things with real, whole-food ingredients, you know, it's more nutritional, you feel better when you eat it, and it's better for you.
So, before I moved here, I didn't know people ate potato salad with their gumbo, and so that was different, but it's actually really delicious.
And now, we'll head to Miro to learn more about what's happening at Davies Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Joe Long, school board member of District Five, and I'm happy to introduce the Super Team at Davies, who will share their Super News with us as part of our new segment, School Spotlight.
Hello, I'm Avery Johnston.
And I'm Jackson Nunez, and welcome to our WJD studio and to Davies Elementary School. We'll start today's segment with a look at our morning news crew, under the direction of librarian Kristy Nunez. Our news team informs, motivates, and entertains our school family each day. We even include a daily joke to kickoff our day with a giggle. We also recognize our fellow classmates for positive behavior and awesome academic work.
And speaking of awesome, our school recently hosted Literacy Week. With the theme of enchanted forest, we celebrated literacy each day with a number of fun activities, including dress-up days and a lot of special guest readers.
We also combined math and literacy night with grandparents' day. So, parents took the night off while students and grandparents visited Davies to play math and reading games, shop at the classic book fair, and visit different classrooms to participate in activities.
It was a huge turnout with over 800 guests in participation. Wow, we love our Davies grandparents. A special thank you to the teachers and faculty members who volunteered their time to make this event successful.
Also giving us something to cheer about are the members of our pep squad, under the direction of teachers Casey Brown, Casey Missy, Erin Johnson, Jenna Sullivan, and Brandy Tucker. Pep squad members can be found cheering, dancing, and performing stunts at many school events, such as our talent show and winter concert.
These girls can also be found performing around our community, like marching in parades or performing at parish events, showcasing their dances, cheers, and performing stunts. Way to go, girls. Keep up the great work.
We would also like to spotlight our Joseph Davies Corps, under the direction of music teacher Jamie Marquis. This club is a true team effort, as a lot of people volunteer their time helping our students be the very best performers. They will also be performing at upcoming school events this year, such as the town show and spring concert. Keep the music coming, y'all.
And to wrap up today's segment, we'll ask a question. What do you want to be when you grow up? Our first graders got help on that when guests visited for Career Day. Nurses, computer workers, artists, therapists, policemen, mail carriers, and refinery workers were just a handful of jobs that were presented, and the unit wrapped up when students dressed up as their future profession.
You know, what a fish, Coach. I think I may want to be a news reporter and work for Penn TV.
Like they say, you have to dream big.
You do. We'd also like to congratulate Ms. Erin Johnson, who is this year's Teacher of the Year for Davies Elementary. Thanks for visiting, and for all of us here at Davies. So long.
Bye.
Thank you so much for that great report. We appreciate all of our teachers, students, and parents who really put the "I can" in Pelican. And now, back to Alex and Barry.
Thanks, Mr. Long, and kudos to our on-location team. Now, let's meet one more crew for the day, those at Smith Elementary.
Hello, everyone, and greetings from Violet. I'm Shelton Smith, school board member of District Nine, and it is my pleasure to introduce some of the members of the W. Smith Elementary School family, as these superstars will now share their Super News.
Hello, and welcome to Smith Elementary. I'm Kane Rocha.
And I'm Olivia Williams, and we are happy to share some big news about our school. Recently, the State Department recognized schools across the state for making the most student growth on our LEAP tests. We are proud to say that Smith was named as one of the outstanding schools, recognized in the Southeast Region, which includes the parishes of St. Bernard, Plackmans, Jefferson, and Orleans. Nice job.
Other superstars doing good things are the members of our school's Beta Club. This summer, students and staff traveled to Savannah, Georgia to compete in the National Beta Convention. They placed in the top 10 in T-shirt design and won third place in Song Fest. This is the second consecutive year our team has traveled to the national convention, competing with hundreds of other students from all over the country.
And speaking of competing, sports are also big news on campus. This year, we have a flag football team of fifth grade competing in the New Football in America League at the Valory Sports Complex. Special thanks to coaches Joellen Clark and Talia Lopez.
And the New Orleans Pelicans basketball team was also here recently hosting its junior training camp for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. It was a blast.
Well, it's about time for us to go, but before we do, we wanted to say welcome to our new secretary, Mrs. Randy Elder. She has been a part of our Smith family for a while, and she is always helpful and positive. We're happy to have her here.
Well, it's time for us to get ready for Literacy Week, so thanks for joining us, and we'll see you next time.
On Superstar Super News.
Great job, superstars, and thank you so much for that super look at all the good things going on in your school. I'm Carl Gaines, the board member for District Ten, and all of us on the school board are proud to be part of this Super Team that brings you all the Super News. We'll see you next time on School Spotlight, and now, back to that dynamic duel in the studio.
Thanks, Carl. We hope everyone gains an appreciation for all the good work happening each day in each of our schools, and we'll meet two more Super School teams on our next Super News.
Recruiting the best and the brightest to join our amazing staff is a year-long endeavor. This month, our recruitment team will begin scouting for the next wave of promising teachers. If you or someone you know might be interested in joining the ranks of the finest educators in the state, check us out either online or by visiting our table at the upcoming job fairs at UNO, Nichols, Xavier, LSU, ULL, Southern Miss, and Southeastern. The application process is open for both our traditionally certified staff and those interested in applying to our alternative certification program. Teach St. Bernard.
Well, that would just about do it for today, but before we go, as a friendly reminder, the end of the first nine weeks is October 10th. Families should be receiving report cards shortly after, and parent-teacher conferences are being held October 23rd for all elementary students, October 24th for our middle school students, and October 25th for our high school students. Don't miss them.
And we'd like to give a shout-out to our board member Catherine Lemoine for being awarded the President's Award for Excellence in Teaching for the State of Louisiana by the Louisiana Community and Technical Colleges Association. As a former St. Bernard Parish teacher and leader, and now a board member, we could not be more proud of all of your achievements.
Congratulations, Catherine, and thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on Super News.
Where we always let the Super News roll.
We'll see you next time.
Alex, that was a fantastic presentation.
Thank you to Barry and Jack in the back. The school features have really done a lot, and Barry and Jack worked really closely with the students, so it really added something to this week's.
As always.
The kids were absolutely wonderful.
And then, another big shout-out for Ms. Lemoine. Any questions for Ms. Snyder? We'll move on to item number five. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. As item number five, Red Ribbon Week, we've got Mr. Charles Cassau. Mr. Cassau, welcome, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and wasn't that truly down-home, exciting to see those young people on that camera, speaking so eloquently?
Right.
We got to keep those breakfasts coming, Ms. Voce. We've got a lot of kids to speak. It was exciting. It really was. But ladies and gentlemen, turning the topic to a much, a much more, I guess, serious note is the constant reminder that young people are ever at risk for making bad decisions. And those decisions come in the form of so many forms, and tragically, when they happen, everyone's affected, family, school, community. And the more that we can do to prevent that, ultimately, the untold benefit is beyond explanation. Early on in this journey, about 25 years ago, Red Ribbon was really the start of the journey of helping the nation at large to become aware that irregardless of race, irregardless of wealth or poverty, there was this tremendous scourge crossing our country of young people, older people, making decisions without realization of just how devastating substance abuse would be. And it's interesting, as Ms. Voce says so often, from the Department of Education, what goes around, comes around. America has wakened up again, and red ribbons is a major force. Matter of fact, this year's red ribbons are being supplied by Metropolitan for us rather than us purchasing them from the allotted monies that we get, which again, just talks about how much public awareness is such a needy part of this journey. So, there's that taking place, which I think is very positive for us, that it just proves that the more people know, the more we can help people understand how this happens and why it happens, and ultimately, there are more resources of help than ever before. And, which leads, leads us to potentially a project that we'll talk about at the end of this discussion, but for the moment, I think the appropriate start point will be that each of you, first of all, have a ribbon, and all of our students will be getting those. And then, this Friday, you have a pink sheet which talks about a very large and truly, truly impactful project. Those of you who have been board members for some time, and all of you who've lived in this community, know all too well the devastating crash experiences that have occurred in our community. From Araby to Delacroix, we have experienced unnecessary death and tragedy for so many years. And some of you might remember, before Hurricane Katrina, Kiwanis stood up and helped to create one of these experiences, and it was done through all local people, very successful. Well, that model has now been adopted, and the University Medical Center of New Orleans is officially charged by the Department of Safety to begin to put this together, and it's officially happening now. And I'm very pleased to say that we will be the first school of the year with the privilege of bringing this to the stage, if you will. We will be transporting 10th, 11th, and 12th graders through the great effort of Ms. Munt and Mr. Warner and staff. They will be brought Friday to St. Bernard Middle, because we cannot put vehicles and all the stress on the artificial turf that's at Shawmet High School. So, we'll be moving students there, and the 8th graders from St. Bernard, I mean, from St. Bernard Middle will be joining us. So, we will have close to 2,000 people experiencing what we hope to be will be a very intense and extremely well-done mock crash. We have four wonderful students from Shawmet who will be acting in those, in those capacities, and parents and grandparents are joining in. So, this is a real, this is not artificial names. Devin Cruz is going to be standing as the intoxicated young man who, not only did he drink at the homecoming dance, but he was seen by others, and he's caused this horrendous catastrophe, and his mother's going to be there to deal with this in the process. This is, there is no harder acting, ladies and gentlemen, than to be yourself, and that's what this is endeavoring to do. The students that are involved will be just that. And if you're able, we would be, we'd count it an honor to have you all with us. We anticipate starting to move kids at 9 o'clock from Shawmet, and the hope will, the hope is that we will begin by 10:00. And by about 11:00, the, this visual event will stop, and then, a number of people will be speaking to the students, both our kids who are performing this, what this has meant to them, and, and so on. So, that will be Friday. The, the scary thought, because you know, you think about the multitude of effort in so many arenas of dealing with prevention. Where do you go? There's just, there's one of me, you know, there's so many kids, so many teachers charged with so many things, and I think that the state has begun to look at this and begin to prioritize that drinking or under the influence of some kind, driving and then being distracted with the whole texting and phone piece on top of it, brings us, in the state of Louisiana, every seven minutes and 14 seconds, someone is injured in a motor vehicle crash in Louisiana. So, this is very real. This is a very urgent kind of need, and as I shared earlier, those, you know, who have been in this community a long time know the terrible calamities that have occurred to our wonderful young people. And you know, so often, people, people are so quick and cruel to judge that it's, you know, it's only this kid or that kid. Think of the wonderful children and wonderful families that have suffered so tremendously through this process, so it's something that everybody, everybody, I think, will truly benefit from. So, there's that. Then, as we move further into the month, I have a number of guest speakers that are coming to, to meet, as you all might or might not know, at the middle school level. We do the Second Step Program, just as we do on the elementary school level, so there's going to be guest speakers to come in to talk very candidly about their life experiences and the decisions that were made, and also, very importantly, to bring a message with those kids back home that there can be hope. Treatment is real today. People can recover from, from heroin to tobacco. It's all possible if people are willing to work on that. And a message of hope is critical in this process, because for so long, the message was, "I'm so sorry," and there was no other hope, and it's, it's certainly so much different now. And, and then, obviously, there'll be, on the elementary level, a whole number of fun elementary projects that will be taking place, take your hats off, you know, and sunglasses and all kinds of fun things to help make it fun for kids, but again, all centering back on Second Step, that the decisions we make are so very, very critical. And then, hopefully, by the end of this school year, Metropolitan has reached out, has talked to Ms. Voce and myself, they're, they are looking to do a, a community-centered project, via TV, sort of as a town hall meeting, to talk about the opioid situation in our metro New Orleans area, with real medical training as it's, why does it happen? What do we do about it? And again, what are treatment options after the fact? So, we could talk for hours, ladies and gentlemen, on this subject, but I thank you for the continued support and, and understanding of how just important it is on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassau. But you know, drugs, it's a major problem in our society today, and it's not only that the individual takes these drugs, but it affects, it's a nightmare for the families. It just doesn't affect them. You know, it affects them, but, but the families go through, it's a total nightmare. I think everybody knows somebody that's gone through this, and so, but I'd really like to thank the people who are, like yourself, who try to educate people to put them on the right track. And as far as, because drugs, my son, he's with the DEA now, as far as that goes, you know, and he tells these stories that's horrifying, you know, and it's not only, it's coming from all different sides. Like you said, it's no, it's not the, the poor people, it's not, it's, it's all age.
It crosses all lines. It really does.
All lines, yeah.
It crosses all lines. And the more we can recognize that, and I think, and understand that there are many factors involved, from personalities that have a naturally addictive nature to it, to someone who has become hurt, takes medic, medicine, is not well-instructed as to how to use it, when to stop, and suddenly, you're in trouble. And those are the things that we hope to do with this, this project, with Metropolitan and so on, so.
And it does happen, I promise you. I know some few, but, so, anybody else from the board, please? Mr. Dyssart?
Thank you, Mr. Cassau. I remember years ago, several times, we had the reenactment of a crash.
Yes, ma'am.
For the high school students, and I'm glad some of the middle school students will be also there, but I just thought it was very, very effective, you know, for the students to actually, you know, feel it and see it and, you know, what, you know, could possibly happen to them, and it, again, it was just, I thought, a very effective message to our young people.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dyssart. We hope so. One of the emphasis in the script is helping kids to understand those critical decisions at critical points can make all the difference. That's the point of this. Not just the agony, not just the pain, but be smart. Be smart through the journey, so. Be smart through the journey, so. There we go. Thank you.
And thanks to all those who are gonna be participating and who are helping. I know there's a long list of various, you know, Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, you know, Louisiana State Police, it, it, it's a whole lot of people putting this together, the school system. So, we appreciate all those who are taking part in helping to sponsor this event.
Thank you, Ms. Kassar.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Long?
Mr. Kassar, I just wanna thank you for your efforts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Long.
Been around this board a long time, and I can remember you as a younger person.
Yeah, much younger person.
Your hair was a little, a lot blacker.
That's true, and a lot more of it.
But I could tell from, from your demeanor today, just like it was many, many years ago, that you're very sincere about trying to help these kids, and
Well, thank you, Mr. Long.
In many aspects of their lives, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, a big part of this is the total picture. A dear lady that is now departed, Ms. Mary Rekirk.
Yes.
As you all remember, what a fireball.
Oh, yeah.
And a woman of such passion. She said to me, at the onset of this position, she said, "Charles Kassar, let me help you understand something. You want kids not to get involved in drugs? Make sure they can read, make sure they can write, make sure they have hope, make sure that they've got things they wanna do." Isn't that so true? Seeing those young people in the super news, it was like, that just cranked me up, you guys, 'cause that's what it's about. Helping our young people wanna be and to do.
I can remember Ms. Rekirk, when I was a young lad at Bournemouth Elementary School, many years ago. And, she, she was pushing reading pretty hard in those days also. But, thanks again for your efforts.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Warner?
That was a long time ago, Mr. Warner.
It was.
It was.
It was.
Thank you, thank you for your mission and the passion that you're on. You know, it really is important. And what I'd like to see is if we could video this event and maybe put it on our website, you know, we're getting a bunch of hits on there, we got a lot of traffic through it. Maybe we can capture some of that and
Jack and Barry are planning to, matter of fact. Alex is on it, so I think that's gonna, that's gonna occur. Thank you, Mr. Warner, I appreciate that, I really do.
Thank you.
And of course, let me just be honest, you know, our goal is, we wanna be the best one that's out there doing this, you know? We want our kids to look amazing, and that the message is strong, that it's, it's there. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm sure that'll be on super news next time. Mr. Gaines?
Mr. Kassar, we go way back. And I remember him with much darker hair, more hair for me. But anyway, I just remember some horrendous situations, not these, reenact the real, the real thing in our school, St. Bernard High. We had a few of those accidents along Bayou Road. And so, I'm glad to see that we're showing our kids what can happen, and still can't happen on our roadways.
Well, another piece to this that, Mr. Gaines, as you brought that up, what's wonderful about this sudden impact process and program that's taking place, there are other components that will occur at Chalmette High School. All the 10th graders will have a three-hour session between the start of the second semester and the end of school, so that they're gonna go through in much greater detail, the biology, the science, what this means, the decision-making, and so on. The 12th graders are going to have the opportunity to sit through a mock court experience, so that they see the legalities of what's involved. So, this is trying to be more than just a one-hit experience, but that it's, it has some, some carry-through. And just one other thing, the, the, out of, the tremendous hospitality of St. Bernard Middle, they, they just could not do enough to try to host this for us. I felt it was only appropriate that their 8th graders would be invited to come be a part of that, so. So, thank you all so very much.
Ms. Voeche?
Okay, and I just wanna add to that, the flip side of this, and I know, and Mr. Kassar has been so instrumental in bringing this idea home over the course of how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, whatever.
Hard to believe, yeah.
Forever. You know, we do these kinds of activities to bring reality to the kids, these things happen. But the flip side is, you have to have, as Mary Rekirk said, and as Charles has said many times, the activities that kids are interested in, the positive experiences. So, when we have the second part of his job with the Cultural Arts for the Parish, when we've got activities in the, in music, and drama, and art, the kinds of things kids are interested in, those after-school activities are giving kids positive experiences, so that we see an alternative to this, that there is hope there, that you engage kids in fun, positive things that they're interested in, and they're less likely, maybe, to participate in some of the more dangerous behaviors. So, this whole effort, it goes hand in hand, while we're, we're pointing out, what are the, maybe some terrible things that can happen, whether they be the legal aspects, the families torn apart, all those negative pieces that, as they get older, they do have to see. We have to also offer them opportunities for positive, good things that they can be involved with, so that they see what life can be like in a good way, once they graduate. So, I know that you've hit home with that in many ways, and we've applied for different grants and opportunities, made it a very important part, that these activities are necessary to be funded, so that kids will have positive alternatives, as opposed to negative choices they can make.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Voeche, very much. That has truly been, that's truly been my passion, to be perfectly honest. It really has. Thank you all.
Ms. Voeche?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Well, Mr. Kassar, thank you for your presentation, and keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Okay, move on to item number six, the educational item. Mr. Gaines, please.
Number six is a review of school safety plans.
Okay. This is just a quick compliance with state law. We've had an extensive presentation on school safety plans within the last few months, where we've had representatives of the Sheriff's Department, our local emergency preparedness chief come and speak with us about some of the crisis management plans that we have at each of our schools. But, to comply with state law that I have attached here, each year, I, we are supposed to just make public comment to say that our school crisis management and response plans have been reviewed, as we do this each year, by the staff and by the stakeholders involved, that any revisions to the plans have been made, and that was done prior to the beginning of this school year. And also, to indicate that within the first 30 days of the school year, each and every one of our schools conducted a safety drill to rehearse the components of the plan, and sent me a report in writing indicating that the drills were, were done, what the results were, and if any revisions to the plans had to be made. So, I just wanted to put that out to let the public know, and to let you know that we are in compliance, the plans are up to date. The Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the local governmental entity with emergency preparedness are all aware of them, have participated in them, revisions have been made, and all of the appropriate drills have taken place at the schools, and will continue to take place as the year goes on. Okay?
Any questions for Ms. Voeche? Yes, Mr. Long?
Just briefly, Ms. Voeche, and not to get into the whole debate about security again, 'cause I know we discussed it thoroughly before, but just to assure the public, I think all of our schools have one main, one main entrance, right? No one can just walk onto our campuses or get to the classroom areas without being checked in, so to speak.
Well, they all have a single entrance that they're, that people are supposed to come in through, there are signs indicating to enter within that area. The brand-new schools that we have built have those single points of entry, where people have to be buzzed in, and then identification shown. Some of our older schools that were renovated, 'cause all the, all the elementaries are perfectly equipped in that way. At the renovated schools, while we have a single point of entry, we will be working this year to make sure that those single points of entry are more secure. And that's the plan that we have for this coming year. And, at the high school, we also have, with the newly renovated area, a check-in spot that is definitely, you know, much more secure. So, the exterior doors cannot be entered from the outside unless someone lets you in, you know, other than the single point of entry.
So, everyone should be comfortable in the fact that we've, we've done everything we can to minimize any potential problem.
Yes, we have.
With anyone entering one of our schools.
Yes. And we, we, as we presented to the board a few months ago, you know, we are the first school system that partnered with the LSU Stevenson School of Disaster, or Department of Disaster Management in constructing plans, response plans, that include everyone within the community, all of the agencies that we mentioned before, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the ambulance services, emergency preparedness, and all the entities involved. And all of those plans are in place. So, I feel very confident that if anything, heaven forbid, would happen, that the response will be immediate. Sheriff Pullman at the Sheriff's Department has been just tremendous in partnering with us, response times to schools, I don't think is, can be compared any, anywhere else. They're there immediately. So, all of those are set up too. The State Police, under Governor Edwards, had come to all of the school facilities right before school started, to do an evaluation of the buildings and grounds, to detect if they saw there were any issues that maybe any school would have to address. Maybe a fence or a gate that needed to be done, and we're looking at those, you know, those reports as well. And that is, along with, you know, the millage that was passed on the maintenance of the school buildings, those funds will be utilized if we need to update any of the security issues, the physical issues at the school for this coming year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. All right, next item on the agenda is Project Aware Grant. Ah, Ms. Lametta?
Good evening. I have the pleasure this evening of sharing some exciting information with you. So, Louisiana is receiving a Project Aware Grant from the U.S. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And Project Aware stands for a Project Advancing Wellness and Resilience Education. So, the Department of Ed is in a partnership with Louisiana Department of Health, and they're gonna utilize this funding to provide Louisiana's school mental health support program. Some of the aims of this program are to instill an understanding of the impact of current and past experiences on our students' current behavior and mental health, to promote positive, proactive engagement strategies, to increase student engagement, and support the overall development of good mental health, and to provide school personnel some training on how to detect and respond to students' mental health issues, and finally, to help provide students who are struggling with behavioral or mental health issues, some direct services. So, St. Bernard Parish, Jefferson Parish, and Monroe City Schools will partner with the Department of Ed to implement this program. And the exciting part is, St. Bernard will receive $318,000 for five years, each year for five years, to help implement some of these services for our students.
Very good.
Any questions? Ms. Daisler?
Thank you, Ms. Lametta, for delivering that great news. $318,000 each year for five years. So, with this project, has, is a plan at hand yet? And are we gonna be having more psychologists or more counselors at the school? And which, you know, what's, what's the
The plan.
The plan, okay, for
Okay, the, the plan in general right now, the, it was just awarded about two weeks ago.
Okay.
The initial meeting of the three parish representatives with the Department of Education, Department of Health and Hospitals, is supposed to take place toward the end of this month in term, to identify the allowable expenditures for the grant. When we applied for this with them, we were concentrating on Raleigh Alternative School. There, we felt that the students there, there were barriers to educational achievement, where in many cases, students who were placed at Raleigh Alternative School were experiencing personal and family issues, which negatively impacted their educational progress. $318,000 seems like a lot of money when you look at it, but then, when you actually go to distribute it, it really isn't that much.
Right.
So, to concentrate at that particular school, we are, we're proposing to train all of the staff in the best practices, and that training will be done either through Metropolitan Health Services District, LSU School of Psychiatry, we have that partnership with, the Methodist Foundation partnering with them. They're also, I think, we may have said this before, but the Methodist Foundation, which finances, helps to finance the health clinic at Chalmette High School, we approach them, and they are placing a full-time social worker at their cost at Raleigh Alternative School for direct services to the students there. That person will have a caseload with students that we identify and whose families agree to it, and that person is placed there at no cost to us, to partner within this program. We have LSU School of Psychiatry with Doctors Howard and Joy Osofsky, who will be sending in mental health professionals who will deal directly with the students and the staff in helping them work with the students. So, the training of the staff, we have, some of this will be direct services to the students at Raleigh Alternative School. And once we take a look at how we can support and maybe replicate the model, and look at some additional sites that we may in the future want to expand to, if we can determine how we can, I guess, most efficiently provide those services. Another aspect is to connect the families of the students with the mental health services within St. Bernard Parish, primarily through Metropolitan as the driving partner, because they are the local public agency which has been designated by the Department of Health and Hospitals to be that lead agency here in the metro-New Orleans area. So, we are going to be attending that meeting. We've got an idea of what we would like to do. We have to do it in concert with the people who will be attending here, and make sure that the program is going to meet all the requirements of the grant. So, we're very excited. It should be coming down shortly, and services should begin to be provided at the latest by January. So, we're moving at a rapid pace with this, and we've got some of it in place now, and it will continue to increase as the first year, this school year winds down, and then we'll have this for five years. And as we see, hopefully, as we see progress and movement in a positive direction, then we'll take a look at what funding sources we have, and where we feel that more resources need to be provided. So, extremely excited about what this will do for us. We feel the partners that we have in here are obviously extremely professional and knowledgeable. So, when you're dealing with the LSU Medical School, Department of Psychiatry, and the head of that, and that's Dr. Howard Osofsky and his staff, we've got Methodist Foundation, mental health professionals as well, as well as the people at Metropolitan Health and Services District, who earlier, Mr. Kassar was talking about, they're partnering with us in those ways as well. So, we wanna find that sweet spot and that right mix of services, and what we can provide directly, what we can refer out to, and how they can connect families and students. So, our focus will be at Raleigh Alternative School this year.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche, for that explanation. And, I, I just wanna commend the administration for their initiative in applying for this grant, too. It's wonderful that we were one of three recipients in the state, and so thank you all for your forethought and for your initiative in, in securing this grant. We appreciate it, and it's a much-needed area of concern. We appreciate it, and it's a much-needed area of concern. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wong?
Yeah, Ms. Foche, I'm really, and I know the focus should be at Raleigh to begin with, and it's a work in progress.
Correct.
I'm really, I like the, one of the aims is to provide training to school personnel to detect and respond. And I'm looking forward to this being expanded to, especially at the middle and high school levels. So that our teachers can maybe spot a potential problem with the interaction with the parents. And, you know, you hear about problems at other schools. Sometimes these kids that decide to shoot something, shoot, start shooting, they find they had, they had a mental, a mental problem that was undetected. So it's, it's, I think it's great that we can train our personnel to watch out for any potential problems. That's good.
And, you know, we, we started some of that training this past year, I think, on the trauma-informed training. You want to talk a little bit about that, Ms. Lametta, because I know that you were very involved in that?
Sure, we started initiative this past school year, last school year, to look at some of the social-emotional needs of not just our students and families, but also our faculty as well. And we really started with helping everybody understand the impact trauma can have, past trauma, current trauma, on students and how they may behave, how they may react to things that happen in class or in social settings, how the parents may react, and how teachers may be feeling, and how teachers may react. So we did a several-month study with our principals, which they presented back to their schools just to help everyone understand the impact of trauma. And people think of trauma in many different ways, and trauma is different to everyone. And I say to everyone, many people went through Hurricane Katrina, that's a huge trauma. So everyone's been through a great amount of trauma, if you've been through a life-altering event like that. So we went through many issues and sort of some look-for's and things and ways that we can help and not exacerbate situations. We finished the year with self-care plans, because we also know that if you are also experiencing stress and having anxiety, things may trigger in you, that may make you not interact the best way you can with students and/or parents. So we did a big push for teachers to identify some ways they could take care of themselves and help keep themselves healthy first, so they can then help their students as well. And then we intend this school year to move into giving the teachers strategies they can use to help the students in class, and help the students learn just taking a deep breath when you're feeling overwhelmed. There's just some really simple, basic, concrete things they can bring home and keep, you know, carry throughout their lives as they experience anxiety or stress throughout their days.
Talk a little bit about the training that we just sent some of our counselors to and what we're going to expand that into.
Okay, last week, we still sent all of our counselors, the middle school level, to a trust-based intervention training. And that was a two-day training, really based on when you interact with students, and students who may be struggling with some behavioral or mental health issues, how to gain their trust, and basic things that we can do, concrete things, small to medium, just sort of bigger things we can do with the students in the class to make sure they feel and know they can trust us, and they're in a safe environment, and that we're not exacerbating any of their mental or behavioral issues while we're trying to educate them. We also have some people interested in going into a Train the Trainer, which is in Texas in Mardi Gras, that they may come back and be able to train at our own schools as well. And really help the teachers get some concrete strategies and things to do, because they want to help. They see students struggling, and they want to help. And the state, in the next few months, will release a packet, they call it, of some evidence-based strategies that we can also use to help the students, because it's a problem, it's a widespread problem. We want to get some really evidence-based things that we know will work in the teacher's hands, so they can help their students.
And the reason we were sending our counselors to that training, we're looking at a redelivery model where we are hoping that when we get our coun... Our counselors have the basic training, as they've been through programs at the colleges and universities to attain their credentials. But in this particular instance, we're providing this additional training. And what we're hoping is that through the counselors, that's going to be the redelivery model to the staffs to work with our teachers, when you see this, maybe these are the ways you need to react. When you see a student reacting in this way, these are some things that we will equip you with that possibly you can try and you can do. So the best redelivery model, we think, will be through the counseling staff, and we have counselors at every one of our schools. So we have begun that process as well as this, you know, Mr. Wong, to try to expand it into other schools. And through this particular grant, where the focus is Raleigh, we're going to look to see where the greater needs would be throughout the parish as we expand these programs where we can best service our students and our families. Because, you know, a lot of times, it is, it's really a family issue. While we're dealing with the children, we have many times we've met with parents who have said, "I don't know what else to do. You know, I, I need some help." And we have to make sure, our counselors are really very good with this, but we have to make sure that they then have the means to say, "Well, this is what we can offer. This is what we feel, we can help you set up an appointment to go see this person, or we feel this is what possibly is available here in St. Bernard, so that you don't have to go, you know, travel into the city or go here or there." So that those services, we're hoping to help build that network within St. Bernard Parish, have a broader network that we can help our families, help their students, which then in turn helps the entire community.
As usual, you, you and your staff have always been ahead of the game in a lot, in many aspects, and we appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to follow up on that, and like Ms. Dyson said, and, you know, congratulate you guys on recognizing the need. You know, let's face it, we live in a tremendously competitive, pressured society, and our kids are growing up with the social media and the technology. And there's just a lot of, a lot of different, you know, mental illness out there that needs to be addressed. And I wanted to just congratulate you guys on recognizing the dollars that are out there, going to get them. And then it sounds like we have a really good plan to implement those dollars and put them where they're needed. So, once again, like Mr. Wong said, you guys do a great job of being out in front of a lot of these situations. And, you know, congratulations to you guys.
Anybody else? I have a quick question. Current services at Chelmsford High School, their health unit, do they have a social worker available?
Oh, gosh, yes. At the health unit, there's social worker as well as nurse practitioners, but there is a, a social worker for a mental health component. But the staff at Chelmsford High School, you know, we have four school counselors. We have not only the pupil appraisal, social workers and psych, school psychologists, but we have an additional social worker for that, you know, just for that particular school. So we do have, you know, myriad resources at that facility.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Foche. Okay, thank you very much.
Let's move on to item number eight, personnel changes for October 2018. Mr. Granberry?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening.
Got a short list here, Mr. ...
Short list, right.
And I'm glad to see that on this, that we've got some appointments, some port time for cafeteria techs.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So, appreciate that. I know the cafeteria workers, we appreciate it also. Any questions for Mr. Granberry? Nope? Being none, thank you, sir.
Good.
Good job. Okay, move on to item number nine, superintendent's recommendation.
Well, I think Ms. Snyder went over many of the different school activities that are coming up, along with RAIN Day and Homecoming, and what our students are doing. And it was an excellent piece, I think, on two of our schools with many more to come. But also at the regular board meeting in the next couple of weeks, we will have the '27, '17 financial compliance audit report, which we expect to be good, just like each and every year. But our auditors will be here to present that to the board. We also have recognition of our special Olympic state national teams, which we had done last year. We want to bring the students back for this year's recognition. Those who went to state and competed, and those who were on the national team, who made the trip to Seattle this summer for competition in the National Special Olympics. And Valero has made a major donation to the Special Olympics program, so we've asked them to come and make that presentation at our board meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Is it, Ms. Foche?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Foche? Being none, move on to item number 10, adjournment. Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Dyson, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and good night.